I call the Maplewood City Council work session to order on February twenty eighth, two thousand and fifty-three. Mr. Reese, roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Crossley. Councilmember Falkingham.
Here.
Councilmember Homer.
Here.
Mayor Kanapper.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Mayor Kanapper, we have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Councilperson Crossley?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion, all those in here, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna, other door, other door. We're gonna ask to rescind that motion, so.
Secondary send.
Thank you.
For the record, Councilperson Crossley is present. Mr. Reese, item number four.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, you're not showing this, I don't know.
Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna run through our presentation here. And, um, uh, give us just a moment.
Oh, I know why.
Are you logged in?
I am not, because I don't have Zoom link.
Okay. Give us just a moment here.
Sorry, I didn't think about that. I can't, I'll tell everyone? No.
I don't know.
No, that's why I need it.
Just a moment here.
Sorry. I was like, oh, I'm also.
Are you, uh, trying to find it?
I, I don't have it, so I need to send it to you, or if you have it on your phone. I guess we can send it home. Right? Let's see.
Yeah, try that while I'm looking for it. It's not coming up on my phone. My Coke?
I'm trying to. I don't see the, no, like, it's gonna be on there, please. Should be on your, right? Right?
Okay. There's nothing on the website that.
No, I can't find the. Oh, it's L E X I E. Miller, M I L L E R. Two zero zero three. At yachting.com.
Okay.
The person we know is kidding.
Yes.
Bear with us just a moment, folks.
Sorry.
We walk out tomorrow. On the line, we said.
He said he sent to Lexi Miller, two thousand and three, at yachting.com. L E X I E. Sorry. Yes. Then, you're gonna go, precipice?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank God, thank you.
Unfortunately, it doesn't. Okay, let me know. I, I like invite her in, okay?
Oh, my God. All right, it's, now it's updating. It was second. Yes.
It's just, it's just updating, so we'll have, we'll have something here.
I really am very sorry. I really thought I was ready.
Session of St. Louis-style barbecue.
No, I really, I was like, I've all said, I'm ready, yeah, no problem.
I'm talking about, you know. If that's, never, I mean, you can't put something eleven or eighteen hours. It's just not long in place to do it.
Okay.
That's true.
That's the department you don't call. Do I have a speed? Yeah, that's, that's a. It's not a bad technique.
See, I. All day.
All right.
But you use, but a leather where you're using hole, like, how do you?
Light one end of a trailer.
Okay, there we go.
There we go.
You feel me, go here.
You're, actually, go back there. Is that participant? Yeah? And, does it say?
I have, well, not, I'm Missouri, but I, I did live in Texas for very. Ultimate laziness. I will put something in. I, I will put something in at ten P M. and then pull it out and take it. Perfect, so, yeah.
Am I sharing my screen now? Okay, yeah, oh, there, nice. Okay.
Well, we might have the budget figured out, but we got barbecue sorted, so.
Okay, thanks for the comment related there, everyone. Okay, so this presentation won't be real, real long. Uh, this is our official, uh, budget priority work session, the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. We can move on to the next slide.
Okay. Can I move?
Put it on your screen, but, uh.
Sure. Sharon. Sharon. There, is that working now?
Oh, we can see it.
This one. Why doesn't that work? Oh, man. Nothing else. Nothing else. Normally, I don't have this much trouble.
You're fine.
To share my screen. Right now, one, two, there. Oh, there you go, now. Maybe I do this. There we go. Okay. There we go, I got it done, sorry. All right.
Okay, um, yeah, we'll get through this pretty quickly.
Just interrupt you.
Yeah.
How do you know?
You're on, you're on the screen.
Let's see.
No, you're all right, I mean, you're fine. It was difficult, Chad, I think.
It should. Technically. Okay, six, this. Well, if it's typical, the problem is you're gonna be. I will get your notes.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
And so, but we're seeing your notes too as well, and the.
Are you in the thing?
Yeah, because the Zoom meeting, hold on a second, actually, the Zoom meeting is not. Here we go.
Okay.
You see your notes now, we just see the slide.
And now if I move it, then.
Yeah, it's, it's working.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, sorry.
Yeah, you share screen too.
Share screen too, I'm making a note.
Okay now?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, councilmember. Okay, we'll run through this quickly. Um, basically, just wanted to show this slide, I think it provides some good context. Let me start with the blue, um, uh, line first. Uh, this is our revenue line, and, um, part of this is superficial and part of it's real. The blue line represents our revenue, uh, growth. Again, remember, we had, we received ARPA federal, uh, uh, money. Two straight years. And, um, including this fiscal year. Um, so, we, we will no longer be, be receiving. Harper Webbers. Um, for, for, for the next fiscal year and beyond, so, um, we need to keep that in mind. Um, the good news is, we're now seeing the real, uh, collection from higher sales tax revenue. Um, a full, strong year for that, and our revenue growth from sales tax has rebounded from, uh, the COVID restrictions being released. So that's the blue line. We think that was sort of, uh, level off in future years. Um, the orange line, um, is sort of steady, that's our expenses. Um, but I think we've done a pretty good job, um, on the, on, on, uh, being careful and having some strict, strict budgeting there. And, uh, I think we need to kind of continue with, with watching our overall spending. Um, just because we, we, again, we expect the blue lines to sort of level off some. So it's kind of wanted to make, make those points relative to this graph. Let's go on to the next slide. Um, so, um, this is just for context, in this present fiscal year, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. These are all the personnel changes that we made. Uh, we can keep going on to the next ones. Um, so these, let's go back. Okay, stay here, thank you, um, so these are, um, uh, known impacts to the budget. And all of these, um, have, uh, have an ongoing impact to future budgets. These were the right decisions to make. Um, some of them involve partnerships clearly with the Social Services Coordinator. Um, and, and with Richmond Heights, fully funding the fire chief. Uh, the police reorganization had a nominal impact on our budget, but it did have a, a budget impact. But, um, when you make these personnel changes, they not only impact your present budget, but they impact future budgets as well. So just wanted to kind of point that out, so it'll, it'll impact this, the budget that we're now planning for. Okay, next, next slide. Um, so, just to put in context, we have several studies that we, we've begun. Uh, some are gonna be winding up here soon, and, um, want to make sure we just point these out. Diversity after the inclusion study, uh, traffic calming study. The ADA study, which is gonna be getting here shortly, and the Parks Master Plan. So, with these studies, uh, the diversity act, the inclusion study, we expect to have a report in May. Traffic calming study in April. Um, ADA study is gonna be done, um, in, 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 in the late summer. And the Parks Master Plan should be done in the next month or so. So, all of these, um, um, are multi-year, uh, multi-year efforts, so we can, the, the nice thing about these is it's sort of unknown what the budget impact's gonna be o- over the next two, three, five, ten years, and we can scatter, we can scatter, we, we can sort of plan how we want to do it. And, um, and, and so, uh, you know, we could, we can decide, do we want to invest in the traffic calming study? Um, in, in, in this next year's budget heavily, or, um, you know, do, can we afford it? And, um, again, I expect the traffic calming study to be, you know, at least a five-year plan. The D E I study is gonna be a five-year plan. ADA study is certainly gonna be in parks, all these are gonna be multi-year plans. But, uh, uh, the truth, fiscal impact of all this is kind of unknown at this point. Um, okay, let's go to the next, next slide. Um, we can, um, uh, we want to try to align our budget as much as possible to our, to our, uh, our, our strategies that were contained in our strategic plan that we all adopted about, uh, nine months ago as a team. So customer focus, strategy one, internal process focus, we have seven of these. Technology and training focus. A financial sustainability focus. A community well-being focus. Economic sustainability. And finally, not forgetting about our employees and employee focus. Okay, those are the seven strategies. And then, um, I, uh, illustrated in the packet, twelve examples associated with our current budget. And, um, uh, quickly run through these, the social services coordinator, uh, aligned with the customer focus, community well-being. Our police reorganization, and community resource officers. Uh, uh, touched on several strategies, sometimes it's more than one. Diversity and equity inclusion study is really more of a training and employee focus. Parks master plan, a community well-being focus. Traffic calming, uh, community well-being. Parks improvement upgrades, community well-being, you see, community well-being is, is a constant theme here. Manchester Road, community well-being and economic sustainability. Uh, strategically increasing fees. Uh, that's more of internal financial sustainability. Uh, printing the maple leaf four times, that's focusing on our customer. Joining the Green City Business Challenge, that's really more of a training focus. And, um, establishing an online community jobs board and economic sustainability focus. And finally, the Maplewood Public Library Improvement, that was a community well-being, and that one was one where we together invested around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that was a, a huge effort by all of us. Um, many of these twelve strategies, uh, or twelve initiatives that align with our strategies came out of last year's strategic budget priority session, so this is a meaningful process to all of us and to the public and to me, so I just wanted to point that out. So, our last slide here. Um, so, as we begin this process, and I open it up to you all, some things to consider here. You know, as much as possible, uh, we'd like to, uh, connect our budget priorities to the strategic plan. Um, consider, uh, where possible, uh, the ongoing studies yet to be implemented, we've invested a lot of time and money in those efforts. Um, what can we afford? I want to, I want to talk about this for a moment, so, um, obviously, we, 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 we all want to have a balanced budget. Um, um, we cannot and will not dip into general fund, uh, budget reserves. We are not receiving any ARPA dollars, federal dollars, American Rescue Plan Act dollars. Uh, however, buyer sales tax revenues and general revenues have increased since COVID, so that might be a wash. Uh, it might be a little bit of a net plus, or we're not sure. Um, we will have a clear picture, we expect, uh, of our revenue trends in about mid-April. So that's when we expect to have a clear picture. Um, and then we can prioritize what gets funded. Um, so that's kind of how, how it will work, and, um, so that's kind of, kind of where we are, and, um, the last point is, um, you know, let's get started. And I know the, um, underneath on our agenda, um, has a subpoint to this. I know the mayor sent a, uh, a memo that's part of the packet, so, um, um, uh, that's the conclusion of my presentation, and, um, she, the mayor may want to, may want to comment on, on her memo, but I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, relative to the, to the presentation. Thank you.
I'm just briefly, I think, um, on the revenues, expenses, and I don't remember exactly how we manage reserves, but it might be helpful to see our reserves relative to our revenues and expenses. Um, just to get an idea, I guess if we're combining all of our revenue sources into one graph here, which is fine, that makes sense, but I think anyway, we can, in the future, and this might be more pertinent to future work sessions, if we can visualize our revenue for, and expenses for each funding stream with the reserves sort of crossing the bottom of the graph, that might be helpful to understand past impact of reserves, right, because that's kind of what we're still managing, does any of that make sense?
It does, I'm just trying to think, trying to visualize how I would make it happen.
Right.
Uh, I will make a note. I think, I think I can do it, I think I know, I think I can figure out a way to get all of those points on it, let me think about it.
If it's gonna keep you up at night, it's not worth it.
No, it, it, I, I think it's a very poignant point, let me just think about how I do it, I gotta, I gotta write it down, so.
I'm glad she understands it, because I'm not quite sure, so. You under, you, you get, you get it?
Yes, yeah, I, I, I get what, 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 what you want to try to achieve, I'm not sure how I do it yet, but I, I think I have an idea.
If I can help with the Excel part of that, let me know.
Okay.
Um, also related to the graph, as long as we're talking about it, um, I think it might be helpful, even though we realize, you know, pre-pandemic and post-pandemic are two very different worlds, but, um, maybe for, uh, again, just more data points showing pre-pandemic our revenues versus expenses, so we, we can see more accurately where we've come from. Um, especially because I think we were operating at a, a deficit for a while, so it'd be nice to see that progress.
Yeah, it's probably gonna be multiple graphs, I'm just gonna kind of throw that out there, it'll probably be multiple, but, because you'll have one for each fund, so it'll be multiple graphs, but I'll work on it.
So, I received an email from the Missouri, Missouri Municipal League, and they let us know about some legislative updates. One of them was a Senate bill to, um, get rid of local food tax. And I'm wondering how that's going to affect our budget. Um, and so, if we could, if we could see some type of projection on that, that would be good, because I think that's gonna tie into, um, definitely the priorities that, that, that are mine, that I've brought forward, if that's going to take a lot of, of our funding away from us, or a substantial amount.
When has that's been like assigned to committee, or its progress with the Senate yet?
I'll forward you, I, I can't remember, I just remember reading it, and I was like, how's that going to affect, because we're coming to this.
Right, well, I mean, I'm just thinking, like, they file a lot of things, um, and some of them make it to the light of day and some of them don't, and so it's kind of a determination of when do we dive on that research question?
Does food like grocery food, or food like restaurant food?
Like grocery food. So, White Councilmember Crossley, I don't want you to stay up at night trying to answer this question, but I, I would like for you to at least give me like a thirty thousand dollar, thirty thousand dollar, thirty thousand, girl, thirty, thirty thousand feet. Uh, answer, if you will, you don't have to get into the weeds, but I just would like to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions?
Do we have a sense for, from the, from the perspective of the departments, uh, you know, uh, our budget's gonna be level, are they increasing drastically? Do we, you know, is there a sense for that yet, or is that still being discussed at the department level?
Still being discussed, um, um, you know, S B D is, is kind of a different separate, um, animal, so to speak, but, um, I'll be meeting, uh, with all department heads, um, in the coming weeks, and especially as we have a clear, um, revenue picture to, um, give them some guidance and, uh, offer them, um, you know, some, some priorities that come out of this session and, um, that kind of thing, but, um, you know, I think, uh, overall, it's, um, uh, you know, we, we've shared same sort of information that was presented here. And so, while it's, 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 it's promising that, that, that we have some revenue growth, I think there's an overall sort of, um, cautiousness to, to, you know, let, let's proceed with some caution, but, but, um, but that, it's still, it's, it's still early in the middle stages, I would say, as they're developing their budgets.
All right, Mr. Reese, item number five, please.
Yes. That would require me to have the, uh, in front of me. No. Sorry, I know it's sharing for everybody, thank you. Item number. Sorry, I know it's sharing priorities. Thank you. Item number five. Sharon discussed 2023, 2024 budget priorities.
Thank you, sir.
Jumped ahead a little bit before.
That's, that's all right.
And, uh, as part of that, there's a subheading that, uh, is the, um, mayor's priorities for 2023, 2024 budget.
So, um, um, you all had an opportunity to look at my memo. Uh, that memo came about after conversations that I've had with the, uh, presidents or chairs of those commissions. Um, and like I stated in the memo, in upcoming council meetings, I will invite those, uh, presidents to provide us with a, um, presentation. I wanted to give you all that information because, um, like I said, that, that is a priority of mine for our commissions to receive funding, at least if, if we can. Um, some amount of funding for the work that they want to do or the activities that they want to put on for the city of Maplewood. Those are like my front and center priorities. There are, so those are, to me, those are like my needs, right? And then I have wants. Wants are not really necessary, right? Okay, so, um, what's not a part of that memo is, excuse me, the Juneteenth celebration that the city, um, has taken part in and provided some funding for. That funding has gone towards, uh, porta potties and also, uh, it affects our, uh, police budget because they have a day off and, and fire as well, correct? Yeah, they get paid a day off for that, so.
I, I think we've been able to, yeah, it's a floating holiday, so we've been able to, we've been able to manage that. Yeah, I don't think it affects their budget.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
What, pardon, go ahead and speak.
If we have people working overtime that day, that would be the only effect it would have on, on, on the budget, like if someone was working overtime at the event, that would be the only impact.
Well, and, and that's what I'm saying, like, that is a want, but the city has actually built that in, I think really for the last two years, or at least the last year. Um, so that is like a want that I'd like to see continue. Also, the, um, Elder Fair, Elder Resource Fair that we had in November, the first Saturday in November, I'd like to see the city, um, continue to participate in that. And then finally, uh, the Move With The Mayor event. Compared to the priorities that I put in that memo, um, the move with the mayor event is a nominal amount, like $250, um, in comparison. So, like I said, those are wants, but the needs are in that, in that memo.
Are there any questions about the, uh, memo?
I think this might be maybe just a semantic difference, but I think there is an important distinction between us funding commission ideas and us giving funds for the commission members to spend. It's, it's like difference in that the general preference would be that only city employees have the actual authority and ability to spend taxpayer dollars. So this would be, you know, the commission is interfacing with the staff person who's assigned to them, and that staff person is responsible for making those purchases.
Oh, yes. Okay.
I, I was, I was seeing a difference, but.
I'm, I'm with you on that. I guess, no guessing, my vision is that funds are earmarked, so they, so the commission requests those funds be used for what they're requesting, and then the city does.
The money's been the money. Yeah, okay.
As I hear that, like, we're creating a pool, and we're going to inform them that, hey, we've set aside X, and you can come to us and say, we want to spend
Yes.
10% of X on.
Yes, and I'm asking them to come to us and tell us what the project is. So we're not just, you know, here's $5,000 parks and rec. Um, they, they're coming to us and asking for a specific amount.
And I think what would be helpful when they make that ask is a couple of things. So first, um, like Michael's comments about, you know, impacts for this budget now, but I also have impacts in future budgets. So if we're doing an event or we're purchasing an item, what is the cost in the first fiscal year? And then what are the future obligations of that? So, and that includes more than just like we made this purchase, but if there's an expectation that staff then operate and run it, like an estimated idea of a staff's time, whether that's an annual percent, a weekly percent, I think that's helpful because staff don't have limitless time. And so it's a constant sort of shell game of where can we invest staff time? And that's, and that's a cost too, even if we can't translate that to dollars. Um, so I think, like, with any good cost proposal, you come with an idea of like, hey, this is the first year's cost, but S, cost projections would be really helpful. Um, and since this is the first time we've done it, I think it's an opportunity for us to really set the standard of what we expect as we prepare anybody from commissions when they're asking for taxpayer dollars. So I think like as much detail as possible would be really helpful, because then we can make an informed decision about what it is exactly we're funding and what the impact is into the future.
Okay, anything else? That, that you would like to see or council members would like to see? Because what I'm going to do is go back to the president and tell them, hey, we need you to do this.
If it's relevant, I think maybe like a proposed timeline for like, this is when this would happen, this is how long it would take to plan, this is the commission's role in it, and like, if the commission's taken any official vote and actually, like, the majority of the commission or a unanimous support of the commission, I think that would be helpful information to.
So are the commissions themselves bringing dollar estimates to council, or is it the other way around?
That's my request, that the commission brings the dollar amount to us.
Okay, thanks.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, this is not about the memo, this is about the other items, Mary, that you brought up.
Yes.
Um, you brought up the Elder Fair and the meet with, move with the mayor. Did, did you have something specific in mind in terms of what, what you were looking for?
With the move with the mayor, is that what you?
The Elder Fair and the move with the mayor.
Okay, move with the mayor, $250, and that's for skate rental.
Okay.
So participants can rent skates, because last time we, we had that, or first time we had the event, um, a lot of folks wanted to participate, but they didn't have skates. They didn't want to buy skates for one night. And then, um, the Elder Fair, there was no cost to the city because I was able to find sponsors for it. So really, the cost was just time, um, you being there, council members being there, and then, uh, Audrey being there. And I'm not sure if Audrey was paid. So that would, that would really be the cost. If she was paid, um, overtime for that, then that would be it.
Okay.
But, but for that, I, I like to find sponsors so we don't have to, so the city doesn't have to put forth money.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I was just going to say, it's really, it's really, um, the way, she's kind of a salary employee, so she, she was not paid extra for that.
Okay.
So, yeah, there, there would, there would be no need to find extra money to pay for her that, for that, so.
Okay. Well, then I think the only thing that, um, our request was maybe some funds for printing or dissemination of the advertisement for it. That's it.
So regarding Audrey's, is that something that's baked into a department budget somewhere, or are we setting aside as we are with the commissions, a pool of money? I'm not sure who to look at, because I'm not sure who knows the answer to this, but, so are we trying to generate a budget for her, or is there already one developed somehow?
For Audrey?
Yeah, for her work, not, obviously, her position is paid for, but if there are funds needed for her to transact her work, I don't know what that looks like, but is that baked into a, a, a department, or do we need to be considering that as we're considering these commissions' requests?
Can I? I think we need to consider that, um, because that's a part of, uh, President Creo's request.
I want to make sure we do, that's, I'm sure we don't have to look at.
Yeah, because we have that on our agenda for the council, we're going to get, set aside money for that. But like, um, um, President Creo said, he wants to make sure that that going forward, that money is there. So, yes, I, I say yes. What, what say you, Mr. Reese?
Yeah, we're, 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 um, first of all, there's something, obviously, the mayor referenced it. And this is probably why you brought it up, council member. I mean, there's something before YouTube this evening, uh, that's for this fiscal year. Uh, a total of $2,000, that's $1,000 from Maplewood and $1,000 from, uh, Richmond Heights, if council were to approve it. A total of $2,000, that's an emergency fund. Um, kind of a last resort, but, but something that, um, um, we think is very important, uh, to help Audrey fulfill her mission. And we do plan on, um, within this 2023, 2024 budget, um, uh, asking for an amount as well. I'm not sure what that amount's going to be, but we do anticipate asking for an amount. It will probably be, uh, a, a little bit larger than that for the full fiscal year. Um, um, so, um, we do anticipate asking for, for an amount. But yet to be deter, deter, deterrent, so.
Yeah, that's right on, that's kind of what I'm hoping for. That's great.
Did I confuse you, Mary?
No, I just had more questions, um, because the, the funds that Audrey is going to have. So let's talk about those funds for Audrey, but then let's also talk about the foundation, purpose of the foundation is for folks to be able to go to as well when they need. But I'm not sure how that board's going to work, I'm not sure how they're going to dis, um, disperse monies. And so we need Audrey to have funds because she's going to be able to get, get it quicker to whoever, right?
Correct.
Okay, um, but I guess I, I, I guess my only, um, request is that we are mindful of what the foundation is supposed to be doing too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we don't budget so much in 2024, 2025, right? Because the budget is, I mean, the foundation is supposed to really be doing a lot of heavy lifting.
Sure.
And she should be like super emergency, like something awful is happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Because I, I would hate for her to have, um, money set aside for her to use, and then it's, it's gone in, you know, six months, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, maybe I'm confused. Um, so these, the, the funds we're talking about that are on the agenda for the meeting tonight are different from the emergency funds that the Human Services Commission will be requesting, or they're the same? And it's just a different amount for this fiscal year than what will be proposed for the upcoming budget?
Well, the Human Services Commission, my understanding is they're, they're, they're going to, they're going to be meeting on Wednesday of this week. Um, and, um, and taking, taking, uh, voting on this as a group. So I don't want to be prejudged what they're going to vote on. But, um, I know in general, because I attend those meetings, they are supportive of our social services coordinator, Audrey, having emergency funds. There's, they're supportive of that concept of, of her having emergency funds. Um, uh, and, um, and I believe they're supportive of her having emergency funds in the 2023, 2024 budget.
Okay, separate from the human services. Anything we would set aside for human services?
They're just for Audrey to do their job. That's it.
And it's my question.
Yeah, and I just think you're seeing that, well, you just see says, yeah, that's a great idea.
So just, and then I'm saying this out loud to clarify in my head, I think I'm got it right here. So we've got three pots of money we're talking about. A, a chunk that Audrey has this emergency, great. Potentially some money that, you know, we're discussing these priorities and we want to set money aside for these commissions, so potentially some money that the commission could request. That's the longer time, right? So it couldn't be emergent, and then the third would be the foundation. So there's, ultimately, we'll, we'll end up with three, no.
So, so no, we, we have two pots. That third pot does not exist. The foundation has to make money on its own. The city cannot.
No, no, I don't, I'm thinking as when we look at it from, from providing services, there are three places it could come from, and therefore we need to consider that when we're coming up with numbers here.
Yes.
But we wouldn't want Audrey and the Human Services Commission and the nonprofit to be all dispersing funds at the same time in the same way, because I thought that was the point of the nonprofit.
Correct.
Gotcha. So we're talking really two funds, the funds for Audrey's traveling across two different fiscal years. And the current request on our agenda is for this fiscal year, like you were saying, and then the Human Services Commission, as Sean was saying, is there, it's way behind.
Yes.
Future request. Got it?
Yeah.
Good.
Well, if I could briefly talk about some of my priorities, and I didn't write this down, but I did subject Michael to a stream of consciousness earlier today, so now you are all subject to it. Um, I, when I see that graph of revenues compared to expenses, I start to think about responsibilities and obligations and what the city must do. And at the end of the day, I keep thinking about infrastructure, and I keep thinking about sidewalks and roads. And so any opportunity we have, especially after the traffic study, especially after the ADA study, that we have to invest in the things that only we can take care of, which are our property. Um, that is a very, very supportive of us. Really lucky because I was a lot shorter than, like, I heard earlier.
And I'll amplify that. I, I think I've been a voice for, like, I don't want to pull into a Baghdad-level road anymore, so, yeah, I'm second. They're probably better in Baghdad, I don't even know.
Real quick, on the streets and sidewalks. I mean, I've been watching the streets and sidewalks being replaced for 20 years, um, and us paying for them. And, uh, we have obviously run into any numerous issues with the old streets that we have here. And they do take a lot longer to fix, and they've been more costly. Like, when they dug up Flora, there was rail underneath there, they had to remove all that rail and all that cobblestone. And every time we fix a street, the utility will come in and break it up again. Um, so it's, it's been a bad, it's been a battle since I can, as far back as I can remember. You know, and, and I think one year we ended up spending an extra million dollars out of our general fund just to kind of get caught up with, with some of the streets about 12 or 15 years ago. So I, I, yeah, I know, it's always a prior, it seems like it's a worse priority, um, but I just wanted to throw that out there that yes, it is a priority, but man, every time we tear up a street, it's just something else. It's crazy. It's like, it's like an old home, as soon as you open up a wall, it's like, why do they even buy this house? But anyway, it's fine.
Do we, do we own, um, Manchester, it goes through Maplewood?
We, we either do or will. Um, we either do or will. Um, so I, I'm not sure. I know it was in process, and I'm just not sure if it's happened yet or not, but if we don't, we're going to.
Yeah.
I will find out and let, let, I will find out and let everyone know.
We, we own Manchester from city limits to just before Big Ben, right?
Yeah.
Off, off the giggle.
I thought.
There, there, there was a portion that we did not own.
The strip right here is the last section that we don't own, and we will gain control of that after they're finished repaving it.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
We know what happened.
Um, well, a, as soon as they're done.
That's where the start.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so how about that? Can we, can you see when that starts? Because that's, that was, that has always been my concern. I know that we're supposed to take control of that, all of that, we is in the city, um, but it's like, please, state or whoever owns this, don't give us this raggedy road. And it's not fixed, like, fix it and then turn it up open to us.
Yeah.
Um, because then that gives us time to plan on containing it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll find out, uh, a, a, a timeline on that and let everyone know. Um, but, uh, Councilwoman Phillips is jogging my memory now, and that, 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 that obviously makes perfect sense.
I think it was one of the last things that Marty did, so it was right as that transition from Marty to Anthony. Um, that, basically, that deal was negotiated and, and it was, you know,
Yeah.
I, as part of the council agenda, Sean, I'm sure you remember.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the biggest question was, we tried to get state, allow us to own all the way to intersection. You know, so Manchester, where the metro station is. They're pretty adamant about us not touching the metro.
They're pretty happy about us not touching the metro.
Yeah.
Another question based on um Councilmember Crossley's priority. Can we please have a tutorial on the community block grant funds, please? And and the reason why I say that with such fervor and passion is because Maplewood, let me back up, I thought that Maplewood would not be able to get tax credits for um development here. And I thought that because I thought that the median of our um salaries, income was high. That's not true. The entire city of Maplewood is listed on where we can get tax credits, uh if if you have development here, which means that we we have a substantial amount of poverty or low income in Maplewood. And so because of that, I know that we can use community block grants in um low-income areas. I want to know what those areas are. I don't think that it's just like this small pocket, it's, it can't be. Um I think it's it's larger and more than what I think. And so I'd like to know where that is and how we can start using those funds in those areas for sidewalks.
So last year, we allocated funds for the future, because it's like the county's fiscal year and HUD versus our fiscal year, it makes things tricky. But I believe the county Department of Planning, it's not as a community development, which is not part of the Department of Human Services of the county, excuse me, um managed the CBPG funds, and I do believe they use like federal-level data to create maps of where this can go, and so like, once that map is set, that map is set, and we usually see it when we get CBPG come to our packet, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, you're correct. The the map is um has traditionally been included in the packet when we're talking about the funds. Um but we also, the funds are in like, what, three, four years behind, so.
Honestly, the county might have a PowerPoint or info session, because they do a lot of community meetings around this, get feedback, the content, the zip codes um across the county. They, I would imagine that they already have materials.
Yeah, and I know that we 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 have um allocated those community block grant funds for sidewalks, right? Okay, I want to make sure that, but I know that that those funds can also be used for other things as well.
Yeah, and I think last time we talked about, was it rental assistance?
Right.
Okay, and then those ones are unspent.
Correct.
And we talked about utility assistance, and then those ones were like, also unspent. Because they were also, yes, and home improvement is the most popular one.
And we just re-advocated the home, we just reallocated the home improvement, uh we took action just just recently, because of some of the unspent monies. Um so um you know, there there's there's trade-offs depending on what you want to do. I think it was my first, very first meeting in August of twenty twenty-one when council decided to allocate money to sidewalks, I believe. I forget how much you decided, but you did decide to.
I think it was thirty thousand.
Yeah, direct some money to sidewalks. I'll take your word for it, but um so um but you would like to have some sort of session, or?
I I would, because, you know, we're we're talking about making sure that we're not um you know, overspending of a, on our budget, and so if we're getting funds that could be used for other things, like, I don't, I don't know. Um I think if we can use the funds to assist with some of the parks that we have, if that's possible, if those parks are in impoverished areas or low-income areas, I'd like to, I'd like to see what we can do.
We have in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've used it for like Kellogg Park and stuff like that.
Awesome.
Yeah, no, I mean, it just kind of depends. I think one, one time we fixed it, used the monies to fix up the pavilion at Yale, and, yeah, we have used it for other things besides.
That's.
Sidewalks, and now the, obviously with COVID, the big thing was just getting rental assistance, utility assistance are just helping with
Yeah.
uh repairs, but yeah, they can be used for.
Thank you, thank you, because then I think that 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 helps, uh I'm just going to say it, Parks Parks and Recreation Commission, when I went to their open house, uh the the liaison, what is, I hate to use first names, what's Tiffany's last name?
Tiffany Hyde.
Thank you, um Miss Hyde, she told me in a very kind and funny way, yes, we need money, we need money. And I was like, I hear you, she was like, yeah, money. So I was like, okay, I'm gonna take that back to council, she, it was funny, it was, she was kind, she was joking, and and she also talked about um how she's going after grants, so she can do that, but if if there's a way that we can assist, um so she doesn't have to work so hard, because we have money that's coming into us, we can kind of allocate it towards our parks to support that master plan, that'd be good too.
Are there other priorities that council members want to want to share relative to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget?
This is more about scheduling, um I can imagine that some of these work sessions are not going to take the full hour and a half before a city council meeting.
Yes.
We may be considered bumping up some of those work sessions closer to the start of meeting. Well, that would be less, and I don't have a problem with that. Okay, cool.
We moving, moving it, for example, from six to six thirty?
Yes.
Yeah, um uh like, for example, on March the fourteenth, which is um our debt ser- that
Debt service.
Debt service session, um I think we have that scheduled for six P M. Do you anticipate that taking a full hour and a half?
I don't say it took them very long, because we're not allowed to, allowed to discuss, the money comes in, it has to go out to the bank, so I, I think last year it was twenty minutes. That one was very quick.
That that one jumps out as the, as 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 one um that we can, we can definitely move, I don't know if it's, if if I'm all six thirty, six forty-five.
Six thirty.
Okay. Okay. Okay, okay. We'll look at the rest of the schedule, and um I'll talk with the mayor, we can, we can adjust accordingly. Okay. Shall I move on?
Yes.
Okay. Item number six is just next step, so again, um we're we're moving out with the budget, so um March fourteenth uh debt service session and and related items. Um March twenty-eighth, we get into executive and legislative budget and other items, and then we start with departments in April. So um we will take this feedback here tonight, uh begin to talk with our departments, and um um I will probably put all this information that we got here tonight into better one cohesive document or something like that, and um um uh use it as a template for um uh consideration and um have some individual conversations with uh with a number of you, and uh report back um in upcoming sessions as well uh as we go through the respective department budgets, so um this is part, part science, part art. So um, yeah, very much appreciated. And uh with that, um, yes.
Let me add, let me add, item number six.
Okay.
Just to let council know when the presidents of those commissions that are in the memo are invited to speak, I'm going to, what I'd like to do is schedule them to speak before special, schedule them to provide their presentation before the next work session where we will be talking about that budget, does that make sense? So if we're talking about public works on March twenty-eighth, they would be uh on the agenda for March fourteenth. Okay. Now that's all I got. All right, thank you.
Me too.
Good, all right, item number seven, um we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed to that motion case, we are adjourned, thank you.